Good evening, welcome to the September 8th, 2025 Troy City Council meeting. This evening, we're honored to have Reverend Brigitte Bechtold from Beacon Unitarian Universalist Congregation to provide our invocation, so please rise if you are able and remain standing as well for our Pledge of Allegiance after.
Mr. Mayor, esteemed council members, may we call on the spirit of life, on guard of many names amidst the paperwork and preparation, amidst the emails and emotions, amidst the getting it done and the pressure of time, may we find a little space for lifting our heads in wonder that we are still here, still thriving, still trying together. May we approach our work with a felt sense of our deepest values and the ways we can liberate them to humanize the processes and the forms of our decisions and actions. In this meeting, may we place community and grace at the center of the space between us, so that no matter what happens here, we emerge connected. Amen and blessed be.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Reverend, appreciate you coming forward this evening and providing that invocation for us. I will call the September 8th, 2025 Troy City Council meeting to order and ask for the roll call for Ms. Dixon.
Mayor Baker?
Here.
Councilmember Brooks?
Here.
Councilmember Chamberlain Kranga?
Here.
Councilmember Chanda?
Here.
Mayor Protem Gunn?
Here.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Here.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Here.
All present this evening. We have no certificates of recognition and special presentations this evening, we have no carryover items, so we move on to public hearings. We do have one public hearing this evening, E1 is a conditional rezoning, JPCR 2025-007, Proposed Revised and Restated Conditional Res zoning Agreement, and Approval of Revised Preliminary Site Plan, East Side of Rochester Road, South of Shallowdale, number 88-20-14-152-001 and number 88-20-14-301-031, Section 14, Zoned RT, One Family Attached Residential District, and this will be introduced by our city engineer Scott Finley.
Yes, city engineer, not the city planner. He's off in Italy having a well-deserved vacation. The item, the restated and revised conditional rezoning agreement that is for you tonight was originally here and approved June 14th, 2021. So coming out of COVID thinking things were a little uncertain, there were some delays, but they're back together, they've partnered up, and they're ready to move forward. So there's been no changes since '21 from the agreement that you guys approved in June and the planning commission approved shortly after the preliminary site plan. They had offered a few voluntary considerations for the conditional rezoning, they limited the number of units to 32, the height of the units to 30. They've been actively involved with the homeowners association adjacent to the development, and the homeowners association has been very happy with, you know, the development that's being proposed. Their original rezoning agreement expired in February 2025, as did some other Eagle Water and Sewer permits. They've reapplied for all those permits, they have been issued. Engineering has reviewed the updated drawings, we've approved those drawings, and actually on the consent agenda tonight is the private agreement, so they put up the bonds and the necessary cash deposits to start proceeding with construction if this conditional rezoning is granted once again here tonight. With that, I'd be happy to try to answer any questions.
Thanks Scott, questions from council? I saw Mayor Protem Gunn put his hand up.
Well, first question, I guess you put up, you said they put up cash and the bonds, did they do that the first time?
No.
What was the delay the first time?
I think coming out of COVID, uncertain times, 30% inflation.
So they know, like, so I understand that they've now, they're going to sell the property to another company?
They've partnered, MNK Troy has partnered with MI Homes. So together, they've worked on this revised agreement, restated agreement, it's exactly the same, and they've partnered and put up the escrow deposits for the private agreement that's on the consent agenda.
Gotcha, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hamilton?
Mayor Protem Gunn mostly covered what I was going to ask, which is why this has taken four years. I've drive by that property quite a bit, and I've seen it clear cut and then seen the weeds grow really tall, clear cut again, tall cut. So I'm curious, what is the timeline for them to actually do this this time around? Are they a little more full hot spirits, full speed ahead compared to four years ago?
Well, the fact that the surety bonds and the cash have been deposited with the city would tell me that they are full steam ahead.
Okay.
They actually want to get going and have this built before Rochester Road gets under full construction here.
Wow.
Later in the spring, so.
Okay.
They're looking to move fast this fall.
Okay, very good. Any additional questions? All right, well, let's open the public hearing. I see that one person has signed up to speak on this item, E1, it's Jim McCully. Mr. McCully, as you know, we have three minutes allotted for our public comment, and when the clock turns yellow, you have one minute left, and when it turns red, that's your time.
Good evening, I promise I won't use it all. Long story short, they very said this back in 2021, the site plan was approved. We were big in negotiating with them what that site plan looked like, along with the landscape and along with the detention. So here we are now at 2025, we have a builder that's eager to build and ready to go after it a little bit more. So what's, what's the same? The site plan's the same, detention's the same, engineering's the same, all that's the same. What's changed? They've added more landscape than what we originally had back then. The height of the building, I believe, is approximately a foot lower than where it was originally, and this builder is better suited to build this project in a timely manner. So we look at it from our standpoint, we supported it then, we support it now. Having been on the board for my homeowners association for 25 years, served on the ZBA for the last nine-plus years, that looking at this when we negotiated all this, that we found that we are very happy with the design changes and everything they did to accommodate us to make it a better facility that surrounded our neighborhoods. So, any questions?
We can't ask you any questions, but we appreciate you coming forward.
Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see anybody else has signed up for public comment for this public hearing, but doesn't prohibit you from speaking about the item if you'd like to. All right, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and ask if someone would like to move the resolution to bring it to the table for discussion. Councilmember Chamberlain?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move E1, Conditional Res zoning, JPCR 2025-007, Proposed Revised and Restated Conditional Res zoning Agreement, and Approval of Revised Preliminary Site Plan, East Side of Rochester Road, South of Shallowdale, number 88-20-14-152-001, and number 88-20-14-301-031, Section 14, Zoned RT, One Family Attached Residential District, as printed in the agenda packet.
Support.
Moved by Councilmember Chamberlain, supported by Mayor Protem Gunn, that we approve E1, Conditional Res zoning, JPCR 2025-007, Proposed Revised and Restated Conditional Res zoning Agreement, and Approval of Revised Preliminary Site Plan, East Side of Rochester Road, South of Shallowdale, number 88-20-14-152-001, and number 88-20-14-301-031, Section 14, Zoned RT, One Family Attached Residential District, as printed in the agenda packet. Discussion. Councilmember Chamberlain?
Thank you, Mayor. I remember this well, because it was my first development coming out of COVID on city council, and I remember really wanting to know how the neighbors felt about it, and I did actually happen to have a conversation with Mr. McCully about it, and I was impressed the extent to which the developer had really engaged the neighborhood around there. That means everything to us on council, when a developer takes that effort to make sure, and of course, they're required to notify the neighborhood, but when they go above and beyond and really make sure that they take into account the concerns, respecting those residents and what they want. And to hear that this, basically same version, but thank you, Mr. McCully, in calling out that there's actually more landscaping, it's shorter in height, which is all the better, it sounds like, for your neighborhood and for the surrounding neighbors. So I'm, I'm very happy to support this, support it at once and happy to support it again.
Thank you. Councilmember Hamilton?
Councilmember Chamberlain mostly, again, covered what I was going to say, but it's nice to see this happen. I know a lot is happening on Rochester Road in this next year, though I know your neighborhood is probably very happy Rochester Road's finally happening after all these years. We did it because we got eighty, more than 80% of it funded federally, which is very nice, and it's well-needed, and it's going to get completely redone. But I'm glad to see this, that's been, project's been delayed for four years, so I'm ready to see it done.
Thank you, Councilmember Hamilton. Councilmember Chanda?
Yeah, I wanted to add to that also. I mean, there is, as we all know, there is a shortage of housing everywhere in Michigan and across the nation, so it is nice to see this project is finally happening, and I wasn't in the council when it was originally approved, but I would certainly support this. It's so nice to see that the developer went out of their way to not only talk to the neighbors, but accommodated many of the things that they wanted. See things like glare from the headlights, you know, small things, but those are important, and also adding more landscape, that is nice, I mean, that's something we all appreciate, so I'll be very happy to support this.
Thank you, Councilmember Chanda. Anyone else? Councilmember Hoderick?
Mr. McCully, thank you for coming tonight to speak, appreciate you taking the time out to do that, and city engineer Finley for stepping up to, where did he go?
It's in the front, in the front.
Oh, wait there, I saw you guys go over here, I'm so used to them moving over here. Thanks for stepping in tonight. This makes sense, it made sense to approve it last time, and certainly makes sense tonight, thank you.
All right, the vote, Ms. Dixon?
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Brooks?
Yes.
Councilmember Chamberlain Kranga?
Yes.
Councilmember Chanda?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Gunn?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Motion carries. That concludes public hearings. I don't see anybody has signed up for public comment for items on the agenda from Troy residents and businesses, so no need for council or administration response and reply. We have no postponed items, so we'll move on to regular business. I1 is board and committee appointments. I have no mayoral appointments this evening, but I'll turn it over to Mayor Protem Gunn for city council appointments.
Thank you, Mayor Baker. Resolve that Troy City Council appoints the following persons to serve on the boards and committees to the Parks and Recreation, expires on 7/31/2026, Sanika Atmakur, and expires on one, I'm sorry, and expires, excuse me, and Pamela Brady, Matt Jansen, Vindu Kumar Muddler, and Janice Gerling, expires, oh, my bad here, I did not...
September 30th, 2028.
Thank you. To the Parks and Recre, to the Parks and Recreation Committee.
Support.
Moved by Mayor Protem Gunn, supported by Councilmember Chanda, that we approve the nominations to the Parks and Recreation Board of Sanika Atmakur for the term expiring July 31st, 2026, and the Pamela Brady, Janice Gerling, and Vinod Mullier for the terms expiring September 30th, 2028. Any discussion? The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Councilmember Brooks?
Yes.
Councilmember Chamberlain Kranga?
Yes.
Councilmember Chanda?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Gunn?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes, motion carries. That concludes city council appointments this evening. Next up are I2 board and committee nominations. We do have a nomination this evening, I'd like to move the nomination of Todd Woods-Inzinski to the Local Development Finance Authority, LDFA, as a resident member for the term expiring June 30th, 2027.
Support.
Moved by the chair, supported by Mayor Protem Gunn, that we approve the nomination of Todd Woods-Inzinski to the Local Development Finance Authority as a resident member for the term expiring June 30th, 2027. Any discussion? The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Councilmember Chamberlain Kranga?
Yes.
Councilmember Chanda?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Gunn?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Brooks?
Yes.
Motion carries. That concludes mayoral nominations this evening. I don't believe there's any city council nominations this evening, correct? Very good. All right. There is no closed session this evening, so we move on to I4, Standard Purchasing Resolution Four, Oakland County Extended Purchasing Cooperative Contract, VFD, for the main pool pump at the Troy Community Center, and budget amendment, and that'll be introduced by our recreation director, Brian Gull.
Good evening, Mayor and council. The item before you is a request to award a contract to install a variable frequency device to the main pool pump at the community center to Shaw service and maintenance of Southfield, Michigan, for an estimated total cost of $36,590 with a 20% contingency for not to exceed amount of $43,908 per the Oakland County Extended Purchasing Contract. It's also requested that a budget amendment be approved to the Troy Community Center General Equipment Capital Fund in the amount of $43,908. Happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Brian. Mayor Protem Gunn?
Yeah, this, I'm a little familiar with, so by understanding, this will help reduce the energy consumption quite a bit?
Yes, it will do that, it will also allow the pumps to run at the exact speed they should. Right now, we kind of depend on staff to open and close them every time a pump is turned on, so if they don't set it the right speed, it could affect.
How many, how many gallons is in the pool?
88,000 in the main pool.
So this, that basically almost will cut it in half, the use.
Well, we tried to run it at where it's at now, but it's just a matter of with them opening and closing it, it gets air in the line and can mess it up, and this guarantees too that it will run at the speed it's supposed to run at.
But I think it will cut it, from what I understand.
Yeah, it will save energy, too, yes.
All right, good. Thank you. Any other questions? Councilmember Chamberlain?
Thank you, Mayor. I think as those people know, I enjoy swimming at the community center pool, and I know it's, some of the repairs are taking longer, is this part of them? Is it, we need to wait to order this, do you put this in?
No, this is, this is something that is separate from the pool project, this is something that can be done in a short amount of time, so this has nothing to do with the current project.
Okay, and do you have an estimated time on the pool?
Not at this point. I will send on more information as I get it, so.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Councilmember Chanda, do you have a question?
Yeah, I mean, I actually was going to ask this question that Mayor Protem Gunn asked. I think the advantages are saving energy, as well as, I think, the life of the pump, is that one of the advantages?
Yeah, the life of the pump, just by staff not opening and closing it, and it always staying at, maintaining the same speed, it will increase the life of the pump as well.
And if I understand correctly, it's for the main, it's in the aquatic center pool, or?
Community center.
The, oh, the inside?
Indoor pool, yeah.
Indoor pool, okay.
Correct.
Okay, great.
Any other questions? Someone like to move the resolution? Councilmember Hoderick?
I'll move I4, Standard Purchasing Resolution Four, Oakland County Extended Purchasing Cooperative Contract, VFD, for the main pool pump at the Troy Community Center, and budget amendment as printed in the agenda packet.
Support.
Moved by Councilmember Hoderick, supported by Mayor Protem Gunn, that we approve I4, Standard Purchasing Resolution Four, Oakland County Extended Purchasing Cooperative Contract, VFD, for the main pool pump at the Troy Community Center, and budget amendment as printed in the agenda packet. Any discussion? Vote, Ms. Dixon?
Councilmember Chanda?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Gunn?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Brooks?
Yes.
Councilmember Chamberlain Kranga?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next up is I5, Bid Waiver Pool Leak Detection Consultant, Troy Family Aquatic Center, that'll also be introduced by our recreation director, Brian Gull.
Okay, so this item before you is a bid waiver to award a contract for consulting by American Leak Detention of Southeast Michigan for leak detection services at the Troy Family Aquatic Center in the amount of $12,225 with a 20% contingency for not to exceed amount of $14,670. I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Thanks, Mayor. Mayor Protem Gunn?
So currently, we don't have any detection system in place?
That's something that a consultant has to do, there's no way we can check it ourselves. We've, we actually spoke to many of the pool companies in the area, and none of them do it either, and one of them that we work with all the time is the one that recommended this particular company.
Have we had any problem of something happening?
Right now, has something happened?
No, like, have, have we had any leakage that we?
Yes, that's why we're having them out, because we're losing about 20,000 gallons of water a day, and then also that increases the amount of chlorine, acid, things that we use, so we're using way more of that than, than we normally need to.
So we have that kind of leakage, are we fixing where the leakage is coming from?
This is to find out where they are, we don't know where they're at. So, so this is the first phase, we have to see where they're at, how many, you know, what the situation is, and then we can get more information on, and come up with a game plan on what it'll cost to repair leaks, but we have to find them first, so.
Gotcha, okay, thanks.
Thank you. Additional questions? Councilmember Brooks, you wanted to move this resolution?
Oh, sure, thanks, Mayor. I'll move I5, Bid Waiver Pool Leak Detection Consultant, Troy Family Aquatic Center, as printed in the agenda packet.
Support.
Moved by Councilmember Brooks, supported by Councilmember Chamberlain, that we approve I5, Bid Waiver Pool Leak Detection Consultant, Troy Family Aquatic Center, as printed in the agenda packet. Any discussion? Councilmember Hoderick?
I just, Mayor Protem Gunn's questions reminded me that you weren't on council when we actually discussed the capital, the tremendous capital needs for the aquatic center. It is an aging asset in the community, and one of the capital concerns that occupies the minds of those of us that have been around for a while. There was actually discussion at one point of, should we make the investment, the capital investments in the facility, and we had a profound, loud, raucous set of feedback from residents that, please, yes, we, we want this asset. This was back during COVID, and as I recall, the city clerk, bless her heart, read every single email into the record over the Zoom meeting that night. So this is, this is just an additional, when we're looking at our facility's needs and the community, and one of the things that we're comprehending, this is an example of that, and where we're having to invest capital to make sure we adequately maintain our facilities. So I will be supporting, voting for this, and appreciate the effort it's taking and the challenge of it, to problem solve, look into, and keep this valued amenity running well.
Any other comments? The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Mayor Protem Gunn?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Brooks?
Yes.
Councilmember Chamberlain Kranga?
Yes.
Councilmember Chanda?
Yes.
Motion carries. That concludes regular business this evening, next up is the consent agenda. Would anyone like to pull an item from the consent agenda for further discussion and consideration? Councilmember Hamilton?
I'd like to move all items on the consent agenda as printed in the agenda packet.
Support.
Moved by Councilmember Hamilton, supported by Councilmember Chanda, that we approve all items on the consent agenda as printed in the agenda packet. Any discussion? The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Brooks?
Yes.
Councilmember Chamberlain Kranga?
Yes.
Councilmember Chanda?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Gunn?
Yes.
Motion carries. If you're here for an item on the consent agenda this evening, all have been approved. Next up are memorandums and future council agenda items. I do have an announcement of a public hearing, September 29th, 2025, which is our next meeting, is the adoption of the Brownfield Redevelopment Plan Number 12 for Forbes Frankel Troy Ventures LLC, parcel numbers 88-20-19-476-004 and number 88-20-19-476-005-3050 and 3062, West Beaver, West Big Beaver Road. And that'll be at our next council meeting two weeks from tonight, and it's a public hearing. Next up is public comment for items not on the agenda from Troy residents and businesses. We do have a handful of people signed up this evening. As a reminder, for our council rules of procedure, you're given three minutes, the clock will keep time here for you here, when the light turns yellow, you have one minute left, when the light turns red, your time is up. It is not a back and forth discussion, so we won't be able to answer any questions on the spot, or ask any for that matter, and we will have an opportunity to reply if necessary at the end of all the public commenters who have spoken. So with that in mind, we'll call up our first person, which is Anthony Porta.
This is up close and personal. Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Anthony Porta, and I have served in the fire and EMS industry for 14 years, longer if I include my time in private EMS, hospital ERs, and volunteer fire service. I'm here tonight not simply as an outsider, but as a taxpayer who has worked inside the EMS system, and I'd like to speak about our recent contract we awarded to Star EMS. Troy has had some different EMS delivery models over these years, none quite right for our community. When the city commissioned an outside consulting firm to find that just-right fit, the results were presented last December. They were clear, and two points stood out to me. The first was that in 2019 to 2023, 58% of the time, a second or greater run came in before an EMS unit was available. The second point was that Troy residents, on average, waited between 13 and 19 minutes for an EMS unit to arrive on scene. So whether we look at response times, coverage availability, or even just our run volume at 9,000 a year, we can see that the city is active, vibrant, and really quite busy. And rather than model our EMS and fire response after similar communities with a comparable workload, we've chosen, in my opinion, an option that emphasizes numbers on paper and not necessarily the residents in need of medical services. My concern is that private EMS agencies are for-profit companies, they're more concerned about the bottom line than actually the Troy residents as a community. Fire and EMS calls, as we stated, don't come in one at a time, they stack, and when we delay that by minutes, we don't know what the real risk is, it could even mean someone's life. In the same firm at that December meeting, it stated that once we move past five minutes, that risk of mortality increases, and so the secondary concern of this contract was that we gave Star a six-minute window to respond, so we're beyond that five-minute time. And this doesn't even include the growing pains of a company that's new to the city, a factor that will probably add in some growing pains, but also how stretched-in that Star might be responding to White Lake, Southfield, Pontiac, and now our 9,000 runs. I guess, to put it bluntly, when I look at neighboring communities, we see Rochester Hills posts a five-minute response time, Royal Oak posts a five-minute response time, Birmingham has three minutes. Are Troy residents supposed to accept six minutes or longer as our norm, or should we plan to drive ourselves to the hospital? These are all kind of considerations that go through my mind when I see this current contract. I firmly believe cost matters, insolvency in the city is important, that is a given, but I think no project in the city is more important than the safety of its residents. Troy deserves dependable EMS, and not just the stretched attention from a private provider. I urge the council to hopefully reconsider this contract and use the recommendations that were made at that December meeting from our consulting agency. Thank you.
Thank you, Anthony, good to see you. Next up is Joey Colby.
My name is Joey Colby Bernert, I live at 51
I live at 5125 Shady Creek Drive. I am clinical social worker and a graduate student at Michigan State University College of Human Medicine. I have taken time away from my doctoral applications and my master's capstone to address an issue that strikes at the integrity of our elections, specifically the ongoing misinformation around the bond proposal. Under the Campaign Finance Act, and I quote, "A billboard, poster, placard, pamphlet, or other printed material, having reference to an election, a candidate or ballot question must display identification that contains the name and address of the person paying for the matter." Despite this, these flyers are continuing to pop up throughout Troy. They're on electrical boxes, construction barrels, and power poles without the required identification. Not only that, these flyers look to have been generated using artificial intelligence. This is not just sloppy campaigning. It is unlawful. MCL 169.247 makes clear that knowingly distributing campaign material without the proper disclaimer is a misdemeanor punishable by up to $1,000 fine or 93 days in jail. These signs are not only unlawful because they lack the required disclaimer, they are misleading to our residents. They talk about cutting waste without naming a single example of what they mean. Do they want to cut the police? The police are the largest. They get the most of our tax dollars. Do they want to cut our parks, our library? Have they taken into consideration that Troy's tax rates are lower than many of our neighboring cities like Birmingham, Rochester Hills, Pontiac? And they suggest new housing pays for itself when we know growth requires costly new infrastructure. This is not an honest debate. It's anonymous unlawful propaganda. Our constitutional republic is reliant upon law and order for the democratic process to exist. I am asking that the city take steps that would help reinforce public confidence, discourage unlawful practices, and protect the integrity of the debate over the bond initiative. Thank you for your attention on this matter. I'm going to leave this right here.
Thanks, Joey. Next up is Aaron Green.
Good evening, council mayor. I've been up here many times before. You, you know my history. I am a librarian by training, so you'd think that I'd be up here about this nonsense. I'm not. I am up here about a comment made by our mayor on Ruhr Raj the other day, wherein he specifically said that some people feel safer having the National Guard on the streets of their city. Now, you may not know this about me despite our previous interactions, but I'm, I'm a white man. I have lived here my entire life. I've lived in Michigan. I've lived in Metro Detroit, almost the entirety of that. I lived in Troy for closing on a third of my life now, if not slightly more. This is my home. This is where I live. It is incredibly safe. I've lived in some of the safest places in this country, and Troy is one of them. We have been recognized for that fact. I am a lifelong, multi-generational, American citizen on both sides of the family. I have spent over a decade in public service in libraries as well as serving on committees and volunteering for elections in Troy. I, my grandfather, my father, my uncle have served in the armed forces. My essentially son-in-law is currently serving in the reserves. Some of my best coworkers and some of my best friends are military. I appreciate, respect, and love the members of the armed forces, both in my family and those who I do not know. And I'm immensely proud of them. But the scariest thing that I've ever encountered in my life in numerous places is encountering military in civilian locations where they have no business. In 1997, I went to Israel and rather enjoyed my trip. I went with Teen Mission, the Metro Detroit Federation, Jewish Federation activity. It was a great trip, but the, the scariest thing was going around Tel Aviv and Jerusalem with an armed soldier escort the whole time. He was a lovely guy, but it was scary. Went to Barcelona in 2020, early 2020, for, for an anniversary. And the residents are working through many years of civil unrest trying to get rights from their government. And the military is trying to squash them, so there is military on the streets. Same thing in Hong Kong, and historically in Germany, and Poland, and France, and Austria. And that's where I felt unsafe, and that's where people feel unsafe. That's not where the military belongs. Get them off our streets.
Thanks, Aaron. Good to see you. Next up is Melanie Woodrich.
Hi, good evening. I, I want to echo a lot of what Erin was just talking about. This is what I came to speak about as well. I've been a resident of Troy for over 30 years, and I feel very safe here. I would not feel safe with troops on the streets. So please, no, for the record, I would not feel safer as a resident of Troy with the National Guard here. Thank you.
Duly noted, Melanie. Thank you. Next up is Mike Flores.
Buenas noches. Mi nombre is Mike Flores, and I want to respond to a recent statement from our mayor that people feel safer when the National Guard is present in our cities. Let me make it clear. The statement is wrong. It is deaf tone, and it ignores the painful history of what militarized streets have meant to many Americans. For marginalized communities, Black, Brown, immigrant, and LGBTQ+, the presence of soldiers have never meant safety. It's meant fear, intimidation, and violence. To suggest otherwise is to overlook the decades of lived experience, Mayor. As a Latin gay man, I'm not Aaron, especially after today's Supreme Court ruling legalizing racial profiling, I can tell you personally that if I saw the National Guard on Big Beaver, I would not feel safer. I would feel more vulnerable. I would feel like my city does not see me, sees me as someone they want to control, not as someone that they want to protect. This is not the Troy that I believe in. So what does make me safer? Safety is a world-class library where my future children can study and grow and dream and invest in our future. Safety is streets and roads designed for everyone, drivers, bikers, and walkers, where people, ideas, and commerce move freely throughout Troy without fear. Safety is making sure that our police and our first responders have the tools to de-escalate, to connect people in crisis to the health that they need, mental health, housing resources, community support, so they are treated as neighbors and not as the enemies. That is real safety, not soldiers on the street. Real safety is built on trust, opportunity, and care. And so tonight, I am asking every single council member to do more than just listen. I'm asking you to hold our mayor accountable for his words. Make it clear that you do not agree with our mayor, because words do matter. But as consequential, silence signals complicity. Words and silence shape how the city sees our community, how the city treats the community, and how the city of Troy defines safety. Let's commit to building a Troy that is safe for everyone, not just a few like the mayor suggested, but for all of us. That is the Troy that I believe in, and I know that my neighbors do too. I look forward to hearing a clear statement condemning the mayor's comments by all council members in their closing remarks this evening. Gracias, and thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Flores. Appreciate you coming forward. That concludes those that have signed up for public comment for items not on the agenda from Troy residents and businesses, and now is an opportunity for council or administration to respond. Could you put your hand up?
Yep.
Mayor Protem Gunn?
Well, first I want to respond to Anthony. This EMS contract, there's still a lot of exploration going on by the city. We needed this timeframe anyways. We, I think you may be alluding to the fact that maybe we needed in-house EMS program, which is certainly under consideration. This contract did drop the eight, drop us from eight minutes to six minutes. It's not the perfect scenario yet, but it gives us time to try and evaluate whether we can bring it in-house under, you know, what's under consideration. To the comments of Mayor Baker's, I will tell you, from my experience of knowing this man and being a resident of the city of Troy, he has made safety a high priority. And I do not believe he was calling for the National Guard to come to the city of Troy. It is one of the safest cities. We have an incredible police staff led by, previously by our current city manager and by Chief Jones now. And I just know that safety has always been a priority of Mayor Baker.
Additional comments? Councilmember Hoderick?
I appreciate Anthony coming in to, to speak to the EMS decision we made and recognizing that we did have to move forward on our current needs. The council moving forward and city administration down the road may, may evolve that decision, but that was a necessary decision for, for the here and now to make sure we ensure delivery service. So we take your comments under serious consideration, and we'll keep factoring it into that decision-making. With regard to a request to condemn comments, the comments I heard in that interview were some people feel safer. And what I heard being expressed was a recognition of the various reactions. And we see it all over our national media and all over the conversations to the very idea of a National Guard presence. So what I heard was, one of the reasons I like to watch that show is these perspectives that are shared from different views, sometimes representing personal views, but also recognizing what the other political views are out there. I value the fact that we work together so hard in this community, residents, council members, to truly listen, to understand, and engage and understand multiple views. I remember the fallout of the National Guard being brought into Detroit. I remember the fallout of Kent State. I will tell you, speaking for me personally, I, I share the perspectives that were brought. I also value listening to understand people, and I fully recognize that on a broader scale, talking in the nation, there are people who are voicing that they feel safer in their neighborhoods because there's more of a presence to reduce crime. I think there's a crime discussion, there's an immigration. I've heard, I've seen them interviewed. I have also seen those in similar neighborhoods, the residents begging for it not to be there. So I'm listening to understand, being sensitive to it. I hope that these discussions and actions that are being taken at a federal level, that there is faith in the people representing you on the council, that we value the safety here in this city, our approach to policing, a community policing philosophy, which I think that's what you're asking to make sure you're hearing. We, we are in a very vulnerable time in the nation, and I have very strong opinions on a number of factors. My role here is to make sure, I do everything to make sure we do keep people safe, that we follow laws, and I, I will commit to that. And I am, I'm very concerned about how vulnerable I do know so many in the nation, in our community, in the region are feeling. And I want you to know that I, I do hear that. There are some that inexplicably to me do find that to be a solution that they speak to. And they're recognizing that. Why is that? What can we be doing? And getting to a place where we talk about problem solving and making sure all of our communities are safe. I appreciate you coming in and sharing your thoughts. I'm happy to talk more after the meeting. And let's keep working together and keep, to the best of our ability, the conversation and a really, truly listening to understand and keep one another safe. Appreciate that.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Thank you, Mayor. Just on that topic, full disclosure, a lot of people sent me the link. I have not been able to watch the interview. It's not fair for me to speak my opinion on something I haven't even watched. So I'll try to take a look at that when I have time. For the EMS issue, a lot of what's been spoken is how I feel, but I, I'll continue to say what I said when we studied this months ago, is that I do support bringing it in-house, but it is a big, big budget impact. It would be $3.5 million for the first year, acquiring equipment and everything, and then $2.5 million in remaining years. I think it's the right investment. I think to in-house it allows us to really do, control the quality of it. As Mr. Porta mentioned, our neighboring cities have very good response rates. I want us to have the same. But one of the key points that was brought up when we had Fitch and Associates or contractor evaluate our situation was that it would take a year and a half to two years to fully staff, get the equipment, bring that department. I mean, this would be the biggest expansion of city employees in a long time, in like decades. So it would take time to do that, and we want to do it right, and we want to do it in detail. So for now, third-party EMS for the next year and a half to two years is what we're going to have. And we were having problems with response times because after COVID, a lot of prime, and you probably know this more than anyone, Mr. Porta, private EMS, just the model that used to work where Medicare or health insurance covers that just isn't working anymore. It's just harder to keep their employees, and so the response time suffered. And so we worked to improve our existing contract with Alliance, and we did, and the response times have gotten better. But we still need a salute, we still need to improve things for the transition period if we do in-house it. So the Star EMS, EMS contract was that goal to, for the intermediate, for the near future, to improve our response times with the long-term goal to bring it in-house. For me, as one of seven, I want to bring it in-house. But that $2.5 million budget hit is a lot, and public safety is always our priority here. Of our current general tax dollars, a super majority of it right now goes into public safety. That's our number one investment and always will be. But if we do that, taking $2.5 million, that's going to come out of everything else. And so until we know the answer on what happens with the bond and the funding with that, I think we need to let the voters decide on that before we take the next steps. So I think the Star EMS contract was the right move for the next year and a half to two years. In the future, we'll look for more. Mr. Colby, thank you for your comments. I'm running for reelection this year. A bunch of people stole, a bunch of my lawn signs got stolen, whatever. It's not a big deal. I'll, I'll replace them, but that's illegal. That's trespassing. That's stealing. Just even if you're for me, if you're against me, just follow the law, follow the rules. I do, I put my lawn signs in the right spots. A lot of that's going around, so, yeah.
Thank you, Councilmember Hamilton. Councilmember Chamberlain?
Thank you, Mayor. Just to be brief, because Councilmember Hamilton just stated some of what I wanted to share around EMS. Mr. Porta, it's great to meet you. Love to talk more later. And again, you know EMS, so I don't need to state that. But something I heard as I was speaking with residents after our decision was not everyone's aware, I think people forget, we have a volunteer fire department, and that's why we can't quickly make a switch to other communities like Sterling Heights, who are able to use their full-time fire department to be able to staff and run EMS. So that's where Fitch and Associates is saying about a year and a half to get up and running. And we needed a solution. After that decision, I went around, and I had residents, some of whom had heard about this decision, some of whom just had opinions on EMS. One neighbor, a very dear person to me, has had to call the ambulance twice within the past year or so. And she literally waited on one occasion 15 minutes, another occasion 20 minutes. So that is why we had to take a new decision, because that is unacceptable. And yes, I hear residents that we need to continue to think about what it means to do in-house. We just need to do it eyes wide open, because it means at a difficult time, how do you process insurance? How do you, how do you have all that staff to be able to, to be able to adequately resource it and run it? So it is running it with residents, number one. So we want to do it right. But happy to speak with you further and to learn more from you as we, as we work for this, this process. Mr. Colby? Mr. Colby, I have the same sign, so it landed in my mailbox. We know that's a federal offense. My husband confirmed that, and that was after an act of incivility. Over $400 of my lawn signs were stolen, and that's my private property, on the private property of people who allowed me to put them there. Not only that, there were other acts of incivility, and then someone bothered to put this here. I do want to address the misinformation that the new homes will add revenue. I want to challenge anyone who thinks that's true, is to look at the budget. In the budget, it talks about how much revenue was brought in from year to year, year over year. What I have written here in my notes, I need to double-check in the budget, but I have $7 million. I asked this question in our budget study sessions, $7 million. What can $7 million do? I'm going to look at, can that fix a library? Can that buy a new fire truck and fix roads? $7 million will maybe pave two miles of roads, two miles of roads. So the new homes will add revenue, that that will pay? No, that is inaccurate, that is false. And again, I challenge you, open the budget, and you will find the information that is correct, it is true, and will show what is reality. I want to challenge all of us in this polarized environment to act with civility. And I wasn't given this link, so I haven't seen what was said, and I don't comment on anything that I have not been able to watch with my own eyes. Again, just thinking of civility. What I want for myself, with the incivility I experienced today, I want that for another. And that's how I want to run my campaign, and that's who I want to be as a public servant in this city.
Thank you. Just on the Councilbrooks?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, to Mr. Porta, thank you for your service as a first responder, and thank you for your comments. It is greatly appreciated. Obviously, this is an ongoing discussion. As my colleagues have stated, you know, we needed to make changes with our EMS system, but the long term is still to be determined. So it's really an ongoing discussion that we will continue to have. And the health, safety, and welfare of our residents is of our utmost importance, and so those discussions will continue to center around that. Also, to Mr. Colby, I have a question. So we understand that this does violate campaign finance rules. Is there any way for us to determine who might be behind any of this?
Senator Boon?
Thank you, Mayor. So it is possible that somebody, residents may have, you know, some cameras. I know that there are a lot of cameras out there. Some of the businesses may have cameras as well. Any of that information, if there is evidence of somebody taking a sign or somebody placing the sign, we're happy to consider that. But a lot of times, it's just very difficult to find out who the person is. But I do encourage persons who may have had this happen to them, may have had a sign removed or placed on their property, perhaps they would look at their Ring cameras or other types of recording devices to see, or maybe even ask neighbors to see if anybody did see anything. Things such as a license plate would be helpful, absent evidence of somebody actually doing it and being recorded.
Right, thank you. And they would be able to notify the authorities?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, thank you. So I do take that very seriously as well, because I think it is important that we maintain civility, as Councilmember Chamberlain said, in everything. There's a lot going on in this world right now and in this country, and I think it's important that, in our city, that we maintain civility. And I also agree, I have not seen the footage of Mayor, so I can't speak as it pertains to that as well, so.
Thank you, Councilbrooks. Councilmember Chanda?
So, yes, thanks, Mayor. First of all, Mr. Porta, pretty much anything I wanted to say has been said. We are watching it pretty closely. EMS is a priority to the council, is personally to me. I've been asking questions for the last many months. We'll be watching the response time, and if changes needed to be made, we'll make changes. We want to bring it in-house, but as, you know, many stated here, it is going to take time, it's a lot of investment, and if it's not needed, if we can get the same result from something cheaper, why not get that? But we'll be looking for results. But it is our number-one priority, and thanks for your service as a first responder. In terms of Mr. Colby, I am aware of that, I've seen it in my neighborhood, so I didn't get it myself, but it is important that civility is maintained and laws are not broken, so I join voice with that to see if we can find out why this is happening, support that. In terms of Mr. Flores, I have seen parts of the clips, and I love and respect Mr. Baker. We have been best buddies, so I'll let him respond, but I do want to say unequivocally that I feel your pain. I am also in the opinion that National Guard does not make anyone feel safe. I'm sure there are people that may feel safe, I'm not one of them, and I'm sure for every one person that feels safe, there are probably at least 10 people that do not feel safe. National Guards are there for emergency, for natural disaster, not to militarize a peaceful city like Troy, and I'm pretty sure Mayor Baker did not mean to bring National Guard in Troy, but it has an effect on a lot of people who are wary of the reason for National Guard. So I have seen only parts of the clips, I don't want to make any more comment, but I do want to state unequivocally that it is not something that I will absolutely support anywhere here. So it's not in our hand, it is not decided by city council, it's decided by federal president, so not much we can do, but as a citizen, I do not support that.
Thank you, Councilmember Chanda. I apologize to city staff for having to sit through some of this, related to me, anyway. So I fully recognize you've been here since 8:00 this morning, so just a few more minutes on this, if we don't mind. Mr. Porta, I hope you feel heard by everyone on council, certainly everyone has spoken to it. I shared most of the sentiment with most people of most things that were said today. Obviously, it's something we'll continue to evaluate, because it is a life-or-death situation, and we're in a position where we have to, and that's priority number one. So thank you for coming forward. I know it's not easy to come forward, especially in your role, but appreciate the comments. Mr. Colby, same to you, as always, love the bandana. No one else said it. Again, well addressed by my colleagues up here as it relates to what has typically been called silly season for the next two months in city elections, has been the past sentiment. I expect more of the same to continue, and I also hope that some things will get better as well. To the three of you, Mr. Green, Ms. Woodridge, and Mr. Flores, who came forward tonight to speak about my comments directly on the Pulse. First, I appreciate your decorum, your respect, your demeanor, your kindness, your everything you did, as opposed to what I see in some other cities on some of their YouTube channels. So we're doing something right in Troy by having people who come with good, caring hearts and speak kindly, and I do very much appreciate that. And I've said many times, whether it's on an issue about international things, local things, this is supposed to be a safe public space where our rules for public comment allow for public comment on issues that matter to our residents. So I appreciate you taking that opportunity and coming forward tonight. I'm not going to lie, I don't love that it was about me, that's not always fun, but I do want to address just briefly that, and I guess first and foremost, absolutely not do I want the National Guard to come to Troy. That was never, I actually did state in this interview and a couple other ones that, you know, that's not something I support. When the first came up, I said it, I bristled at the idea of coming into any city doing this. I've always said that DC is a little bit different because of its relationship to the federal government, but even on that same episode, I said, I have the transcript here, I wouldn't like it if someone came into Troy and the president said, "We're just sending troops there." I stand by that. And I've spoken with Mayor Bowser in Washington, I've even reached out to Mayor Johnson in Chicago through relationships with the U.S. Conference of Mayors, and I've shared my concerns and my opinions on that matter. I absolutely did say some people feel safer with the National Guard. I didn't say all people, because I know that some people certainly don't, and for very good reasons. And I went back on a week later, I hate to even mention this, and now you can go look at that and find something I said there, but we talked a lot about how everyone views this through a very different lens, and I fully respect all of the lenses that this issue is getting addressed with. I am very cautious in my role as mayor of this city. I take the nonpartisan aspect of it very seriously. You'll very rarely hear me talking about partisan-type issues from the table or even out in the community. I have gone on the news and played a certain role and a certain respect, where I've spoken a little more freely, but if those comments are really parsed, and if you look at the transcript, and I urge my colleagues to look at them, they're on my social media, they're on Fox Two Detroit's webpage, they're on YouTube channel, they're out there, everything I've said in there, and I ask you to watch them in their entirety and look for everything that is said, because I think you'll see things a little differently. But again, I do fully recognize that there is a, I think Councilmember Hodrick spoke about it a little bit, there's been a lot of conflation between immigration issues, crime issues, what that means. Through this process, I was called a racist because of saying that some people feel safe by having the National Guard there. I understand that people are really amped up for very good reasons, and I know that we're a city that's 29% foreign-born, and I've worked really hard to reach out to every person in our city, not every person, but through all the corners of our city, so I could talk to as many people in our community and understand what their experience is here in the city of Troy, and how things affecting, going on in other parts of the country and the world affect them. That's been my record in this role, even when I was on council, and I'll continue to do that. I wish, in a way, you know, I was on with Debbie Dingle that night, Congresswoman, and we talked for about 20 minutes before we were on air about this issue, and about 20 minutes after we were on air about this issue. The eight minutes that are on air are what you all can see and understand, right? And so it's a little bit difficult to now look at the, you know, a week and a half later, how that's landing. I will always represent this city with what I believe is best, which of course is putting public safety first, and again, I don't support the National Guard coming into our city. I hesitate to say too much about it, because I don't want to irritate anybody in Washington DC. That's another role that I play. That's the truth of it, and I say that because I work really hard to make sure our city stays under the radar where necessary, so we can do the good work of our city and also succeed and thrive. It gets harder and harder. And the one thing I did say that will add a little bit more is that when I said that some people do feel safer, I've learned very much that it very much depends on your generation, your age, the color of your skin, where you grew up. There's a lot of different factors that play into this, and like Mr. Green, I share some similarities in how I look and my gender and, you know, my age so much, and so there's different, that's going to, of course, color my view of it. Mr. Flores, I appreciate you coming forward and asking for council to essentially weigh in on it. I know why you did that, and I fully do respect it. I would love to talk to you more about it, maybe after the meeting, if you want to stick around for a little bit. If not tonight, we can always reach out, I'm accessible. And of course, the two of you, same courtesy applies, of course, because I represent all of you in this city, and that's important to me that I hear from everybody. So again, full eight minutes is online. If you haven't seen it, and now you're dying to see it, go take a look. Might help, might hurt, but it's the reality of it. I appreciate everybody coming forward tonight and giving me the opportunity to speak about it. All right, we have no council referrals this evening. We do have a few reports. Did anybody have any comments on the reports? All right, council comments? Mayor Protem Gunn?
Well, first, I just want to remind everybody, Troy Day starts Thursday, that's a big celebration for our city, and Thursday's always exciting. We will be swearing in new American citizens, so that's always a fun time. And I also want to thank city manager Frank Mottassi and Kurt. You guys helped quickly solve a potential accident in my own subdivision, so I thank you for that. Well, you changed, it worked. So, thank you. And it was me that could have been the accident, so.
Councilmember Chamberlain?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to follow on Troy Days. On Sunday, it's International Day, and that is run by our Global Troy Advisory Committee. So speaking of our diverse city, my own husband just became a U.S. citizen a couple of years ago, so that is something that I take very, very seriously. Mr. Flores and others who spoke is making sure we are a community that is welcoming and that all of our residents, no matter your background. So I encourage folks to stop by International Day, it's a great celebration of our beautiful cultures here in the city of Troy. Other thing, briefly, I just want to share, I want to wish my husband a happy 24th wedding anniversary. Unfortunately, I had a day, I was in Lansing for work, and, you know, I have council, but he is the one, he is the better half who enables me to be here, who enables me to serve. He is the one who's getting pizza on a council Monday night, he's the one getting my son to Blackhawks, running cross-country team. You know, he's the one who, I call when I find that $400 of my lawn signs were stolen. You know, he is the one, and I think what's been hard today is it was a day of hard news, of being personally attacked with great incivility, and the way that my own family now feels unsafe. It's very sad in this climate of polarization, and thinking of my own son, who we spent three hours on Sunday putting lawn signs around the city on property of people who gave us permission, because I had relationships. I served on the Downtown Development Authority for years before I was ever on city council. I served with those people who have given me permission, and others have given me permission on their property. I served with them, I know them, I have a relationship. So I think that's what saddens me, is that my family, my son, now what he's seeing about our political system, what he's learning as a fifth grader, of what Americans do to each other over a bond, what someone would do to me over a bond that is meant to be for the health, safety, and welfare of this community. So I just put that out there, that again, let us act with civility. This is a city of Troy. Crime is not acceptable in this city, and crime happened. Crime happened. It is not acceptable. We are a city of civility, let's live that.
Thank you, Councilmember Chamberlain. Additional, Councilmember Hamilton?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to mention that last week, I couldn't be there because of work, but we cut the ribbon on Sylvan Glen Lake Park, the new play structure there, it is absolutely stunning. It's almost like a mini Innovation Hills in a way, with some of the playgrounds and the hill and everything. I took my girls there today and yesterday, and they lost their minds. It was so much fun, and it was really hard to get them to leave, and they cried a lot, but that's how it was. It is a beautiful new park, funded through federal dollars, and that's what, the kind of things that investments in our parks can do. And so just want to point that out, because it's beautiful. It was very crowded today, a lot of people are checking it out, and that park is absolutely gorgeous. And I grew up in Sylvan Glen, so it's got a special place in my heart, so.
Very good, thank you. Councilbrooks?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, first of all, obviously Troy Days is this weekend. It has evolved into a whole thing. We have a naturalization ceremony, we have, I think, a 5K run, breakfast, a parade, International Days, so it's a whole thing. So I encourage everyone to come out, it's very family-friendly, it's a great environment, my kids love it. And the other thing that's been on my mind as well, and now I don't want to sound tone-deaf because of this whole discussion about the National Guard, which is very different, so just keep in mind, obviously, the National Guard is at the federal level, and most of our first responders are more at the local level. But this week will mark the 24th anniversary of 9/11. And for me, it's actually hard to believe, because I distinctly remember that day, it's actually seared in my memory. It doesn't feel like it's been that long ago. And so I know I will remember not only the innocent civilians that died, but also our first responders. And many gave their lives that day, but also many first responders suffered long-term health consequences for trying to save other people as well. And in that same spirit of remembrance, we have recently honored our fallen Troy firefighters, and earlier in the year, we honored our fallen police officers as well. So, you know, these moments just remind us, you know, of the courage and the sacrifice moments just remind us, you know, of the courage and the sacrifice of those who do serve. And as we were talking about, you know, our society can be so divided, and unfortunately, so many of our institutions are under attack. But at the same time, you know, if you're sick, who do you turn to? You tend to go to the hospital, and hopefully, you are treated by a qualified healthcare professional. And in that same vein, if you are in a time of crisis, hopefully, we rely on the dedication of our first responders. So I just want to just take the moment to say thank you. We need you. We value you, and we appreciate you.
Thank you, Councilmember Brooks. Do you have anything, Councilmember Chanda?
Yeah, I mean, just like everyone else, Troy Days is coming. So it is, a lot of things are happening, naturalization ceremony. And I believe there's a parade on Saturday, correct? So come and join the parade. It's kind of new. It started last year. I enjoyed it a lot last time, and the 5K run on Sunday. Naturalization ceremony means a lot to me and myself as a nationalized citizen 20 years ago. So good to see more and more people are taking the oath and becoming American. Just like Councilmember Hamilton mentioned, the place structure in the Sylvan Lake Park is amazing. I have shown the picture to many people. They can't believe that we have that in Troy. So things like that are happening because of federal grants that used to come or came at some point. One thing I might want to mention to our city administration, that we might want to publish that, like, you know, maybe put it in some of the monitors on the community center. A lot of people don't know about it, so maybe we'll see in, over time. But some of my friends, friends mentioned that they didn't know about it. I said, "Well, we just did the ribbon cutting a few days ago." So but, and the suggestion was to see if we can publish it more, show it in the community center, things like that. But it is something we're really proud of in Troy, that we can invest in things like this. So that's, that's, you know, if you haven't been there, go and check it out.
Anyone else? Councilmember Hodorak?
Just shout out to all the volunteers that are going to be pulling Troy Days off, and all the city staff that helped make it happen. There's a lot of work, a lot of people that come together. Really, one of the positive things in the community of that camaraderie. So thank you to all of them who are stressing out as they, they face the coming days and pulling off the event. Regarding the Sylvan Lake Park, I just, I see our WPDW director, Dennis Trantham, I hope it's okay, city manager, to kind of give him a shout out. I understand that park was his baby. I see his boss nodding his head behind him. It is absolutely beautiful, and it looks like it was always there, always meant to be there. So I just wanted to take a moment and acknowledge you and, and everyone that came together to make that park come together. On the political side of the House, that type of thing is coming together through multi-partisan people working together. What, what you get to witness in the seat, a nonpartisan role, is the fact that it's not always in the media, but you have people who, all of these challenges, all of our opportunities in the city that we're, that we're addressing, they really aren't partisan. And we get to experience that as we do the work of the city and work with our partners in Lansing, in, in Congress at the federal government. And I just wanted to take a moment to say that that's the case. Republicans and Democrats alike, coming together, understanding a vision that's, that's shared through the operating side, the priorities that have been brought forward from the residents, through parks and recs planning, master planning, surveys. It gets represented, and the people you elect work together to help make those things happen. Roads funding, parks, cricket pitches, getting a fire engine faster than we would have. So I hope we can get drenched, and this is partly speaking, me speaking to myself and reminding myself, there is so much positive work going on locally in Troy. We're in a really good place. We have a great team of employees that really work to try to represent and do the work that we bring forward in the policy setting as we work to represent the residents. So I appreciate the constructive conversation tonight. Yes, we had some incivility. It doesn't reign supreme. It's not really what the city is. And I just want to challenge everyone, you know, I'm seeing a smattering of something that happened 15 years ago here, and why I got involved to begin with. I don't want to see us go back there. And so I hope we can collectively work to keep the conversation constructive. We're not here to sell you one way or the other on the bond. We are asking for you to fact-find and work together with us constructively before you vote. I just wanted to take a moment and acknowledge that. Thank you.
Very good. Troy Days check. Good. We got Troy Days down. This is out of left field. Aileen, or Clerk Dixon, I just want to say, I tuned in to the Planning Commission, last Planning Commission meeting, and I loved your presentation on Robert's Rules of Order and how meetings should be run. And I'm wondering if there's a plan to present or some version of that to council, maybe in the next training, or we have, we'll have a new, new makeup, a little, at least a little bit after November. So I don't know. It was a very beneficial presentation, and I think it was really, I don't know, I think it's wise for every board and committee in council to see it. I don't know if that's something that's on your mind. But thank you for the presentation. It was very, in true Aileen fashion, it was very digestible and almost fun. So, that was on YouTube. All right. We don't have a closed session. I'm sorry, there's nobody signed up for public comment for items on or not on the agenda for members of the public outside of Troy. We don't have a closed session this evening, so we are adjourned.